Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is July 27, 2023. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham ZBAA is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Then you put in the conference ID number, which is 464-515-886, then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link on the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue slash hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this hybrid form of meeting, I will have a roll call of all members. Please state your name and whether you approve or not, starting with Ginny.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
Lee?
Lee Hevy, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Randy Potash, I approve.
David H. Veitch, I approve.
I would ask that any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone, please give us your name and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. Let's see, before I go on to how we'll run the meeting, we'll have, we do have some minutes, I do believe. Paul?
We have minutes from our meeting on June 22, 2023. I'll move to approve them as published.
Dave Veitch, seconds.
Okay, we need a vote on that. Ginny?
I approve.
Paul?
I approve.
Approve.
Veitch approves.
Okay, and I approve. Thank you. Okay, how is the meeting conducted? Well, to begin with, the application, or whatever it might be, is read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah B. Clark. She's the PPO for the Town of Chatham, and is the Principal Permitting Officer. Following that, we would have a presentation either by the applicant or their representative. When that's done, I would ask for anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor to do so, please indicate you want to join. I would then read any and all correspondence we received. Following that, I'd ask for anyone here or in the audience who wishes to speak either against the application or has a specific question. This is your opportunity to do that. There could be some rebuttal after that. Then we would have direct questions by the members of the board. When we were done with that, we would close the hearing and go into deliberation. Deliberation means we would be the individuals in the conversation unless a member introduces someone into that conversation who added something during the meeting. Voting in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be successful, you need to have a supermajority. In our case, there were five votes, so you need to get four in your favor to be successful. Voting today would be Ginny, Paul, myself, Randy, and Dave, except on application 23-056, where Randy is recusing herself. So in that case, Lee, please vote. So are there any questions? Firstly, we have a guest today. It's Jay Thaddeus Eldridge. He is the engineer who owns and operates southeast here in town. He does all kinds of things. And the subject of LiDAR has come up. And I asked Thad if he would come today and give us a quick presentation on what it is, what it does, and maybe we will see that someday it could be part of an application, a presentation they would have. This should not be construed to be something that we are promoting as a board at the moment. I do believe that Thad is the only practitioner of this system on Cape Cod, so it would be a little difficult to do. At any rate, Thad, thank you for coming, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. For the record, Thad Eldridge, he's southeast. There is a countertop company that uses LiDAR to measure the cabinets before they cut the marble.
But we wouldn't hire them to do a site plan?
No, probably not.
Okay.
So LiDAR, light detection and ranging, or laser radar, or basically laser scanning, the picture above would be cool if we saw that going down the road, but it's really what's below is what it looks like. Everything's invisible. FODAR is very similar to LiDAR, but it's based on 3D data from photographs, usually from a drone, can be from a camera. There are a number of options for acquiring this data, from handheld units, vehicle-mounted, plane-mounted, drone-mounted. Really, the camera and the drone would produce that FODAR. Everything else has lasers in it, and they've had cameras to it as well. So the first data set that we get out of this is called a point cloud. It's a 3D bitmap. Every point has an X, Y, Z coordinate. Most scanners return the reflectivity of the object that they're scanning. It looks like black and white. It usually is black and white, but I have a black jacket with a sheen to it that comes out white in every scan. You'll see that it's grainy towards the bottom where we're closer to the objects. It's more solid to the back. There is a spread to this data. We can visualize based on height, so everything in blue is low, everything in red is high, and the colors are in between. Then classification is one of the means to sort this all out. Computer algorithms are used. The orange are the buildings, the rooftops. The green are the different levels of vegetation. There's three colors of green hiding in there, brown for the ground. You'll see some gray, that's unclassified points that they haven't been able to sort out. If we showed a different view of this, you'd see some blue for the water. This is also exaggerated in 3D, so all those rooftops are a little steeper than they were in the last. Because it's digital data, we can manipulate it in all sorts of ways. So we can drape these points with a virtual surface or surface modeling. They've been using this down in South America to find ancient cities. They're in the jungles. They'll show a picture of the jungle. They'll show the city in LiDAR form. You would never see it. The University of New Hampshire is using it to find all the stone walls in New Hampshire. A little bit important there. And here, we don't have ancient cities, and we don't have stone walls south of Route 6. This is over in Hawksnest. It's Hawksnest State Forest. You can see on here different deviations, different trails. We have ditches and ridges that defined out the old property lines. You can see some mess here that's probably old farmland. So the point clouds can be colorized. A lot of the scanners have cameras right with them. Or if you get some of the aerial data, it does not come colorized. You can add a photo to it and change everything to a color. This is the Provincetown Monument. So a surface model can be created from that. And then what can we do with it? We can do line of sight. So this is an observer standing here at the bottom of the monument, and what could they see if they were to look through? You can see where all the shadows are and where all the green is, basically what they could see. One of the products we can offer is the volumes of buildings. We take a surface model that includes the ground and the buildings, and then we take one that only includes the ground, and we subtract one, sorry, we subtract one from the other through a routine, and it comes out with a volume. And the biggest question would be is how close could that be? The 2021 aerial LiDAR data, which is the most recent available, that has a spread of just about eight and a half inches. So from point to point, if you had a very homogeneous set, and if you had points that fall right off of the building, you'd be about eight inches into the building. Based on that, the smaller building would be about 89.4% of the volume, the actual volume. The larger the building, the closer you are to 100%. This doesn't take into account overhangs. So if there's an overhang, you'd be getting that much closer. So generally speaking, we're looking at about 95% the volume, plus or minus 5%. There are other things that can be done with this data, and there's quite a bit more, but we can save that for another day. And if there are questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you very much, Thad. Yeah, quickly, let's start with you, Dave. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I think the only question that comes to mind, Thad, is how, how, does this give, like I say, ridge elevations in a neighborhood kind of thing? If we were, you know, one of the difficulties is, you know, we certainly know proposed ridge elevation from an engineer's plan for a subject property, but that information for any surrounding property is not necessarily available. How accurate or is this available through this?
So the 2021 data, I'm sorry, this is skipping. The 2021 data is about an inch and a half in the vertical. That's the root mean squared error, so it's about plus or minus an inch and a half.
Okay.
So we can determine the elevation. Our building height is based on the grade plane. We could determine all of the points within that inch and a half tolerance for the grade plane. It's a lot of work to do that. Producing a ridge elevation relative to sea level is very quick.
Okay.
But the, but the grade plane analysis would take time for each property.
Mm-hmm. But just, I mean, I understand that part, but, but I'm thinking that if the relative elevation of a ridge of a surrounding property would be within an inch and a half of, with respect to its height above sea level?
Correct. And then not every surveyor or engineer puts the plans on the same datum. So sea level changes.
It would have to be translated to the datum that's being used by the...
Yeah, there was one that I was reviewing that we were off by half a foot on the ridge elevation and said, what's going on? I took a couple of ground points, and they were off by half a foot from the, from the engineer's plan as well, and I said, aha, it's just, it's the same, but just a different zero.
But for our purposes, which are somewhat comparative, you know, we're talking a matter of inches that it might be off one way or the other.
And producing a ridge elevation and a ground elevation at the first floor would be very quick as well. It's just the grade plane takes.
Okay, great. I think that's all.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to Thad.
Thank you.
I'm wondering what's the measurement this is given in? Is it cubic feet? Cubic, I'm not very articulate.
It could be in any measurement. We could convert from cubic meters to cubic feet. The example that I was giving here, I had everything converted to cubic feet.
And so do you have any examples of like a known, say, small house and then a large one to show us the difference by any chance?
Have not computed that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Paul? Thad, how do you see this as being of value to us in terms of what we're doing as a board?
It's been coming for a long time. We adopted LiDAR in 2014 because we couldn't get people to help scan or survey the streets for, for the sewer project. We've done miles of road with it, tens of miles of road. We don't have the people. We don't have the staff. We need something in order to get the work done. This data is almost survey-grade. I can, I can complete a property with this, then focus on the important parts of the survey work and not have as much field work and office work. So the data's coming. And in fact, every plan that you see of mine, you'll see that there's topography that extends beyond the property. Most of that comes from this data.
Okay, thank you.
Lee? Thank you very much. Very interesting, but I don't have any questions right now.
Fair enough.
Ginny?
I, I think you answered my, my question that was similar to Dave Veitch's. So I, I had raised the idea of LiDAR at the previous hearing because it was brought up previously. In the context, as Paul was mentioning, to our ability to use it to comment on heights relative to other houses in the neighborhood. And the comment was that, that I recall, was that the ridge height, I'm sorry, the LiDAR was measuring really ridge height, but not elevation.
Not the grade plane.
So is, is that was, I think, that's what Dave Veitch asked.
Yeah, so to compute the grade plane, it's a process. You have to determine the low points within 20 feet of the building, average those together, and then, and then you go 30 from there.
But could you comment on like the, the application I was trying to get to at that hearing, for example?
Hearing, if I recall, that's a very flat area, so the grade planes would be fairly similar.
Okay, that's what I was...
Computing the grade plane for each one would not be as necessary.
So there's going to be greater variability, obviously, in a neighborhood that's very hilly.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Thad.
Hey, thank you.
We greatly appreciate it. I'm sure that's not the end of it for us.
There'll be more coming.
Yeah, we seem to have opened up the door, so I think we'll have some more questions down the line. So again, thank you very much for taking the time to come to talk to us. Okay, Sarah, let's go on to 23-056, please.
Application number 23-056, Whistler Lane Nominee Trust, Carib William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 58 Whistler Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 16J Block 33, Lot LC-1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 17.8 feet from the Westerlea Butter and 17 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 18 and a half feet from the Westerlea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and 19 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,085 square feet, 6.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,791 square feet, 9.2%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 120 feet of frontage, where 150 feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Thank you.
I assume you've all been down to Whistler Lane, and we have Karen Kempden's supposed to be online with us today. Oh, good, because there's nothing on the screen, so I was, I was worried. Before we start, though, we have to do a shout-out to Bob Hessler in the back. Hello, Bob, great to see you.
Thank you.
And his sidekick, Dave Thompson. Any of that, so this, this is a house that was built back in 1948. It's a summer cottage, and then they added on to, with that long addition, you know, designed, of course, to take advantage of the water views. So Eileen, who was a member of the Ryan family, and the Ryan family owns, most as you drive in, all the houses on the left, including the house beyond this one, are all owned by, owned by Ryan family members, which is why we have so many letters of support from them. So Eileen wanted to take advantage of the site, but make the building more livable for her family. So she engaged the services of Karen Kempden to design the home, and the, I think, personally, I think Karen did a great job, and working with Eileen, because they, I think the most notable thing about the building is that, you know, from the top of foundation to the ridge is only 25 feet, which is smaller than most of the buildings we're seeing these days. They did that by having a nine-foot ceiling on the first floor and a seven-foot, four-inch ceiling on the second floor. So Karen, if you could describe how you and Eileen came to this design and, and how you accomplished your goals, that'd be great.
Sure. Good afternoon, I'm Karen Kempden, architect for...
You're muted, Karen.
I'm showing unmuted.
There you go, that's good.
Okay. Sarah, if you could bring up back the site plan?
You have to speak up.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As you know, if you've been to the site, it's a beautiful location, and as the house sits now, there are beautiful views to the bay and to the Outer Beach. As a, as a team, Attorney Riley, David Clark, Teresa Sprague, our wetland specialist, Eileen and I, proposed keeping the new house within the existing footprint of the existing house and deck. Any additions to the house would mainly be on the south side, which is beyond the 50-foot setback to the top of bank. So if you're looking at that site plan, the majority of the addition, again, you can see on the south side where there's the AC and the generator, and underneath that, you have the existing house that has the hatch lines. That's the majority of the addition is on that side of the house. We also tried to keep that part of the house, the main addition, 25 feet back from that main way. The, the existing or original house, if we can bring up the existing plans, do you have those, Sarah? Thank you, that's perfect. So this is the existing house, and as you can see, the front door actually faces south, and there's really no access to it even now from the garage and where you park. Mainly, people use that covered porch entrance to come into the house. So we thought that, again, that would be the best location for the new front door. So that's how we came to the new front elevation, if we could bring that up. The wing to the left of that existing house before on the floor plan was all cathedral ceiling space. So the only second floor was on the small cape on the right-hand side. So the existing cape was actually 35 feet wide by 26 feet deep, and it's a full cape, as Bill said, built into the, in the late 40s, early 50s, with that front door facing south. The covered porch door, again, is the main entry, was the main entry, so we've made that the main entry on the half-cape. You can see the half-cape is where the door is 25 feet wide, and then we have additive pieces to the left, which are lower in ridge height and are stepped back from that front half-cape. The first step back is three feet, and the second one is stepped back five feet. So although you're looking at a front elevation, everything's flat, those are, those pieces are stepped back and, and become smaller as you move to the north. The garage is on the right-hand side, connected to the half-cape by a covered porch, and it's pretty much in the same location that the existing garage is. The ridge of the half-cape is 25 feet above the top of foundation. This is one foot, 10 inches below the allowed building height. The ridge of the existing house is 20 feet above the top of foundation, but the additional height allows us to have higher ceilings on the first floor and headroom on the second floor. And we do this through various shed dormers and a seven-foot, four-inch second-floor wall height. This helps keep the cape at a traditional scale, and the dormers are set in on the roof line, as you can see on the plan, to minimize the appearance of the second floor. There'll be a red cedar roof, white cedar shingles, white trim, and shutters on both the front and the right elevations, which are seen from the road. The rear wing of the existing house, as I mentioned, is all cathedral. So we have added a second floor, basically, in... So we have added a second floor basically in this area. And although in the increase of living space, we are keeping the design as the traditional cape and hoping to mitigate the additional square footage from the original house. The existing house's basement is actually mostly crawl space, only a third of it is full foundation. So as you know, this somewhat skews the gross floor area calculation, where most homes today or new builds have full foundations, and we rarely do crawl spaces anymore. So this is one of the reasons that there is a large difference in the gross floor area, but it does not add to the visual impact of the house from the street. So we worked hard to mitigate the addition of the second floor through the use of stepped-in dormers and stepped-down ridge heights. And the Skidcot style of additive architecture fits in with the neighborhood, and hope that you agree, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you, Karen. If you have any questions to Karen, or just run through the criteria. At the size of the site, in terms of the size of the proposed use. The applicant believes that the size of the site is adequate for the proposed project because the proposed dwelling coverage is 2,791 square feet, or 9.2% or 10% is allowed. The existing building was built in 1948, before Chatham had zoning, and it was built in order to take advantage of water views. As our bylaws changed over the years, the existing building became non-conforming as setbacks from the top of the bank increased. In my application, I referenced the building setback from the road, but upon closer examination of the site plan, the driveway that the building is close to is not actually a road, because really a sideline setback, where the sideline setback is 25 feet rather than 40 feet that I had referenced in my appeal narrative. In any event, so the building is no closer, the proposed building is no closer to that sideline than the existing building. And as Karen noted, you know, the additive aspect of the building breaks up the visual front. The, on the water side, the building setback from the top of the bank is now 50 feet, and the building and its decks are less than 20 feet from the top of the bank. The proposed building design is to encompass most of the decks with the end result that there's a slight decrease in the encroachment from that setback of one foot. And a little further to the south is a two-foot increase in the setback. But still, clearly, the building is close to the top of the bank. Although the building coverage is expanding, 706 square feet, the bulk of that expansion is at the south end of the house, furthest away from the top of the bank, as Karen noted in her presentation. Accordingly, we believe the size of the site is adequate for the proposed project. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. So this is a unique neighborhood. The building, of course, is not visible from the street at all. And so we basically looked at the buildings on Whistler Lane. And if things worked out well, and they didn't, so it's not, I don't have an attachment, but the, looking at the areas, the net areas from the assessor's office, the largest building on the Ryan side, on the left-hand side, is the building just past our proposed project size. The, I did all the work counting all those numbers, and then it didn't get attached, so my fault. But the, and then the next largest building is the Schroeder residence, which is, as you look at the property, to the right. And that net area, including the garage, is about 4,700 square feet. Yeah. All right, so that would be 36, so there you go, right there. And that's, again, that's a full two-story Karen Kempden design, I believe. Maybe not, though, all right. But again, the use of dormers. 69 Whistler Lane is a full two-story building. And the other buildings, as you go in Whistler Lane, are somewhat smaller. They're about 2,700, 2,800 net area. And 119 scatery, which is, can you put your indicator on that, Sarah? Further over, no, more left. There you go. So that's 119 scatery. And that building's about 3,000 square feet net area. So they're all shingle-style buildings, they all have dormers. And so the design Karen came up with really fits in. Our building will be larger than 33 and 43, but about the same size as 69 and 38. So I would say that the size is compatible with the other structures in the neighborhood. Okay, extended the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. The applicant was careful with, working with Karen, not to increase the encroachment further into the sideline setback or the coastal bank setback. The living area of the house has substantially increased because they're adding a second floor. So that constitutes an increase in non-conformity as an intensification of the residential non-conforming use under the Bjorkland case. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties around the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. So this is clearly a sensitive site because of its proximity to the top of the bank. The applicant believes the site is suitable for the proposed construction because the engineers designed barriers to ensure that no stormwater runoff or siltation will occur that will affect the top of the bank or the beech grass growing at the bottom. In addition, the construction has to be done under an order of conditions issued by the Chatham Conservation Commission, which has imposed additional conditions designed to protect the natural environment. Impact of scale, sitting, and mass on neighborhood visual character. Once you've driven up to the project site, it's easy to understand that all the buildings are owned by members of the same family. Although the actual designs of the buildings are somewhat different, because they're all weathered cedar shingles and white trim, there's very much a look of continuity, and I believe that this project will fit in very nicely. It's not visible from the street. The low ridge means it's not affecting, negatively infecting anybody's views or vistas. And the, so we think that the proposed building, with the careful design by Karen, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. In fact, we think it's a lot more attractive than the existing structure. Compatibility of proposed use with neighboring uses, single-family residents in a single-family neighborhood. Method of sewer disposal and source of water and drainage. Septic system's been approved by the Chatham Board of Health, and the property is served by the public water system. Impact on traffic flow and safety. We believe there'll be no impact on traffic flow and safety. Also, we believe there'll be no impact on noise and litter. Utilities are adequate, as are other public services. And 11 and 12 are not applicable. So that'd be our presentation.
Is there anyone here today on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now you would like to join the meeting.
There is no one on Microsoft Teams to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a note, this is from Christina Bassett, dated today. "The Chatham Historical Commission saw this app, and they found the home not to be historically significant, and therefore, no demolition delay was imposed." George Giorgio, health agent for the town, writes on 7/25, "I reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild. They are proposing a new five-bedroom dwelling. This will be an increase in flow and would require the installation of an IA septic system. The IA system was approved for five bedrooms at a hearing before the BOH on June 12. The BOH conditioned this approval with a six-foot cased opening required between the kitchen and the family room." Then we have a note from the Conservation Commission. Here in the town of Chatham, on July 11, they wrote, "The project is scheduled for an order of conditions on August 9, when it will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act." And we have a note, this is from Steve Schroeder. He writes on July 24. "My name is Stephen B. Schroeder, my wife Pamela, and I have a home at 36 Whistler. We've owned our property since 1999 and built our present home there in 206207. Our property lies directly east of Buddy Mrs. Eileen Ryan's property at 58. We have seen the preliminary plans shared with us by Eileen Ryan of the basic structure of the house, as well as the tremendous landscape improvements which will be made by replacing the massively invasive overgrowth with native species and meadow. We understand that local builder Rick Roy has been contracted to build the house, and we know him to be one of the finest builders in the area. Therefore, we have no objection of the applicant's desire to enlarge, extend, or change this non-conforming dwelling. The design and structure of the house will be of the highest quality, and the landscaping improvements would certainly enhance the real estate values in the neighboring area." Then we have a note, this is from J.M. Upson of 329 Stage Harbor Road. Mr. Upson writes on July 29. "Back in 1981, the setback of our bylaw was 25 feet from the coastal bank. Then, for some reason, in '82, the ATM voted to double it to 50. The 50-foot setback is for environmental protection, which you could argue has a greater priority than, for instance, a typical sideline setback. Tonight's request is for new construction almost twice as big as the existing house and only off the old site location by one foot. The applicants are basically asking you to ignore the 50-foot setback. To ignore the preservation of a coastal bank makes no sense. Maybe if they went back to the drawing board, they would come back with a better proposal. Thank you for your consideration." And then we have a note, this is from John T. Ryan III, Irene Ryan Shaw, Michael Ryan, William Ryan, Julia Ryan Parker, the trustee, Ryan Chatham Property Trust. This is all at 69 Whistler Lane. This was received on July 17. "We are writing to represent our family's properties at 43 and 69 Whistler Lane, held in the name of the Ryan-Chatham Property Trust. All of the five siblings/trustees stand in full support of the plans of our sister, Eileen Ryan. She, to demolish 58 Whistler Lane and rebuild its new structure is fully in keeping with the neighborhood and scale and style. Plans on the home and landscaping will be a big improvement to the current situation. As background, our family has lived on Whistler Lane since the late 1940s, when our father first rented on Scattered Road and then purchased property. When 58 Whistler, a property that shares our driveway, came on the market, we were very concerned that a new buyer or builder might move in and build a mega mansion to the limits of the property. As the abuders, we are beyond relieved and excited with the plans that Eileen has put forward and stand in full support for the July 27 meeting." If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Julie Parker. And then we have a note, July 11, from Charlie and Maureen Goheen. They're at 33 Whistler Lane. "We're writing this letter of strong support for Eileen Ryan and her plans to build a home at 58. She has shared her plans with us. We feel the house is appropriate for the neighborhood and will be an improvement over the current structure. The Goheens and the Ryans have been adjacent neighbors for most of the past 70 years. We are thrilled that Eileen Ryan has recently purchased the property at 58 and plans on spending more time in Chatham. She'll be a great neighbor. Thank you for the opportunity to offer her views." And that's it, that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here today on Microsoft Teams who has either a specific question or would like to speak against this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one with a question or to speak in opposition.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. And before we get into questions, I did want to mention something about questions from the board. In the past, we've had some question as to, you know, is that an appropriate question? Or you shouldn't be asking it because it wasn't part of an application? Well, the fact is, we can ask any questions we want, because for us to determine, using our criteria, how do we get to that point? Many things are not included in the application we asked for. I'll give you two examples from my case. And number one, I like to know what the ridge of a new building is going to be if I'm standing in the street. Now, that's not something we ask for, but I can figure it out mostly by asking that or something like that. We had a situation, I think from Mr. Riley, we had one in the Little Beach area where I asked that. I said, "How tall is this thing going to be, that?" I couldn't figure it out, because you got the sand dune, and then the foundation, and then all the rest of it. Well, the answer was 37 feet, so I said, "Okay, well, thanks." That's how I found out. Secondly, it troubles me that we do not get 3D renderings of what's going to be built, because, again, we don't ask for it. Sometimes, we have models. Mr. Riley brought in the best model I've ever seen in my life. It was a property he had on Morris Island Road.
Morris Island Road, Morris Island.
Yeah, and it was quite a procedure. In came the two applicants, followed by Mr. Riley, followed by a very lovely lady who was the architect, her assistant, the landscape architect.
Yeah, Greg Lombardi, it was Greg Lombardi was the landscape architect.
And then finally was the gentleman carrying the model. And this was, I think it was three by three.
No, no, it was more like four by five, it was huge.
And he brought it in, it had, the topography of the lot was perfect. The trees that were going to be left, I don't mean little bushes, but the trees that were going to be left were still there. The house itself, the carriage house, and the infinity pool, and the revetment. I mean, it was unbelievable. And I remember asking the gentleman afterwards, I said, "I don't want to pry, but what did you charge for this thing?" He said, "$10,000. Well, in this day and age, I guess it'd be $20, I don't know. So it was unrealistic to ask for that. We have had models and all that. And I don't think that those folks ever lived in that house, did they?
Oh, of course they did.
For a week? Or was that a month?
Years.
Well, whatever, okay. Anyway, so the other way to do what I'm talking about 3D is Karen Kempden has a fantastic plan where she gives you a virtual tour. And, you know, that's what it is, and Dave, you've seen this, and I think, you know.
Yeah, we had one at the last meeting in the Dumas property.
Yeah, it's just fantastic. And I asked Karen how much it costs, and it's not inexpensive, but it's no $10,000, so anyway. So that's why I ask questions, I'm just speaking for myself. So, anyway, enough of that. And the good thing about you, Mr. Riley, you don't have to answer any of our questions.
I love answering your questions.
No, you don't.
In fact, if you have a question, I've got an answer.
Oh, good, okay. Well, let's see what I come up with. Anyway, that's my soapbox for today about questions. So, Randy, you can't, because you recruited yourself. All right, Paul, how about a question? Make it a difficult one, will you?
Difficult question? Actually, the question I had related to, oh.
Actually, the question I had related to conservation. And so what I did was I watched the Conservation Commission meeting that Dave Clark did. And so what I did was I watched the Conservation Commission meeting that Dave Clark did and got a feel for what concerns, if any, the Conservation Commission had with respect to the top of the bank and the issues raised by Buck. Basically, they had one person there who had raised the question. And the question was basically, should you be moving the house away from the bank? And the point was made that the reason why the house was there in the first place was for the view and that the new house that's going in there is not going to be substantially different in location than the existing house. So I think that answered my question. I don't have any other questions.
Lee.
I just have a quick question about the septic system that was approved. I just don't understand the six-foot cased opening. Can someone explain that?
Well, the Board of Health has a requirement that if you have a room and it's not a kitchen and it's not a living room, it's a bedroom, basically. And so in order for a room not to be counted as a bedroom, they require that it have a six-foot wide cased opening.
Okay, yeah.
Obviously, at the end of the day, you can use it what you thought you were going to use it for to begin with, but it's part of what has to happen, so.
Okay, I understand. The other question I had was, was there any? This is a complete tear down, correct?
Right.
Okay. With a new foundation and everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny.
I watched the conservation tape too. I thought that was really interesting on the 14th. And the overall consensus was they liked the plan. I like the plan. I think Karen's drawings are terrific. I also really thought that the letters by the neighbors and the family members was really what you, you know, it just speaks to long-term Chatham. I thought they were great and some of the most well-written neighbor and family letters I think we've written or that we've received. But one question that I agree with Paul, that the one person asked a question on that conservation tape about the 50-foot setback in the coastal bank and said, you know, half of the house is in the no disturbs zone. And when you look at the site plan, you know, you do see that. So my only, really, my issues with it are, and I want to hear what everyone has to say, is the coastal bank and the setbacks. When you look at the site plan, actually, Sarah, if you can pull that up. So, Mr. Riley, I agree with you that it's a sensitive area. I think you said that when you were going through criteria four. It's a sensitive site. And so my concern with the, and also understand what you're saying about the fact that you're staying within the footprint if you include the decks, which you're allowed to do. When you look at the site plan, though, and you see the orange, now it's not showing up here in orange, but there is a rendering of the original existing house in orange. It's the one with you see.
Well, you can see the original house is the hash.
You can see the hash marks.
Is the hash line.
And then the dark black line is the proposed house. So when I first looked at it, I thought, wow, this is increasing in size, which the size is fine. There are plenty of large homes in that area. I totally agree with that. But towards the direction of the coastal bank where there's only, you know, 17 feet, 19 feet. So I was originally concerned. I went to the site and then I saw, oh, it's including the decks. That's what that extra. So when you look at the site plan, you say, wow, it's really going out. And it's really going to the decks. So I understand that. And I understand that that's the footprint. But when you're talking about mass, you're not just talking about a deck that's at ground level, you're talking about the house going out, the whole house. So that was just a concern that I had. And then, so a question I had for Karen, kind of related to that, because again, I really like the plans. I am just concerned that 17 feet from the coastal bank, 19 feet, is close.
Well, if I could, if I can address that, then you can have Karen deal with the design. The, one item of concern in a bank situation is the stability of the bank. And so the, and the goal of the bylaw, of course, is to protect primarily wetland areas. The no disturbs zone is really designed to protect wetland areas. The top of the bank happens to be the way we measure things, so the setback becomes 50 feet from the top of the bank. But the, here we have a very stable bank with a large beach in front of it that, if you see, there's dredge spoil put out there. See that? Can you mark that, Sarah? There you go, right there. That's all dredge spoil. So the beach is being pumped up. And so where you have a heavily vegetated bank, a house has been there historically and has not created any problems with the bank, with stability of the bank. We believe, and I suggest that the Conservation Commission feels the same way, that putting a structure at that location is not going to do harm to the stability of the bank. It's closer than the existing structure. But, I mean, the goal, presumably, you know, the goal is to protect this, when it deals with the coastal bank, is to protect the stability of the bank. And we don't think that's an issue in this case.
Okay, I thank you for that. I also talked to conservation about weight of a house because the house is increasing and mostly up, up into the southern side, which is not a problem with the coastal banks. So that is, I understand that. But the total weight of that house going all the way across and extending all the way to the decks is, I mean, the total house is an increase of 86%. So there is extra weight. So I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I have heard from conservation that part of a concern is with new construction on these existing footprints close to coastal banks is things like the weight of the building and the coastal, the stormwater runoff. So they have said that.
Well, I didn't go to the Conservation Commission meeting. I got to start going again, I guess. But the only time they raised that particular question was a project we did on Stage Island. I don't know how many of you know the house where Amy McCarthy and Drew Michael lived? Not Drew.
Carlson.
Carlson, hey, thank you. The, and that has a very steep bank. And it's very, it's not a coastal bank, but it's a very steep hill. And so they, to satisfy the concerns of the Conservation Commission, they hired an engineer who did very luminous computations, which I didn't understand. But the conclusion was that this very substantial house and it's a full two stories, much larger than this house is, would pose no threat to the stability of the bank. And since then, I haven't worried about, because this is actually a pretty small house. I know it's new and it's got a second story on it, but relatively speaking, it's not a particularly large structure. So the, I think if the Conservation Commission had been really concerned about the stability of the bank, they could have requested or required us to provide that kind of information again. However, they didn't, so obviously, we didn't go to that expense. I don't know, we have, is Dave Clark on? Okay. The, but if I'm aware of that question in the future, I'll make sure we have information for it.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to bring that up because I had heard that from conservation. So then my question for Karen is related to this, the setback and the proximity to the coastal bank. So Karen, in your rendering on A1, the front elevation of the house, I think I understood what you were saying, how on the left-hand side, which would be going in the northerly direction, right?
That's correct.
Okay. It's stepping back each wing, each of the two wings is going back so closer to the coastal bank. Am I understanding that?
No, just away from the front wall of the house.
Okay.
Just to show that it's not one long massive structure, that they're each sort of separate components and separate structures. So that 17-foot dimension setback is three feet setback from the front and then the following one is another two feet from the front.
Yeah. Okay, so my question was, because I do agree with. So I agree with you. I think what you were saying is aesthetically, it looks better to have it stepped than one. I totally agree with that. Could there be, again, this would be if other members feel this, though, it's too close to the bank. Would there be a way to reverse the step and pull it, go towards the road and then that way you're not losing space in the house, but you're not going as far out as the proposed 19 feet? Just a thought.
Well, of course, I mean, you could do it. It's just a question of, I mean, redesign of the house, that's all.
Okay, well, so those are my questions. My concern was basically just that one pinch point at the top of the northeastern side and then just really maximizing all those existing decks to, you know, to use that footprint. But it's increasing the mass from a, you know, from.
Right. Yeah, that's a correct observation.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Dave Veach.
So Dave Clark isn't on the line. So I, you know, I didn't, I'm looking at, I hadn't looked closely enough, but I'm looking at the site plan that indicates that there is a revetment over a part of this property and extending onto the neighboring property. And so I would, and so I didn't look at the condition of the bank itself, but I would, seeing that situation, I would say that they decided that they didn't need a revetment any further than what's shown, what's in place. And if there came such a time, if they would, that they would be able to extend that revetment because clearly this is a coastal bank, so it's not a dune, so, you know, usually you can get permission to revet a bank. So I would have asked Dave that, but I'm just going to speculate that that's the case. And I don't think I really have any other questions, Dave. Thanks.
No, and my question was exactly what Jenny brought up about replacing a deck with a building. What's the effect on the stability of the top of the coastal bank? And I think you answered that question, so.
All right, thank you.
And I remember what you were talking about, Amy McCarthy's house. That's very true. And she's a lot more wide open than this is, so.
Well, and the house is a lot bigger too.
Yeah, 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 it is. Okay, Paul.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
We need a vote from everybody.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
I vote yes.
Veach votes yes.
Okay. Deliberations. Lee.
Well, I think it is a great design. I really think it's very attractive. You know, providing the bank is as stable as everyone thinks it is. I think it meets all the criteria and improvement to what is there. So I will be voting in favor.
Jenny.
Well, I kind of turned my questions into some deliberations, so I think I got some of that already expressed. I really like the plan too. I think that it totally fits in the neighborhood. I can appreciate with the topography of that lot, why it's situated where it is. I do have concerns about, I guess, primarily number four, Mr. Riley, the criteria, the suitability of the site with respect to the impact on, not the neighboring properties, but the environment, the coastal bank. But you brought up good points about the, and Mr. Veach did, about the reinforcement of the revetment and the stability of the slope and that Paul did about the vegetation. Conservation loved the plan. In fact, they used the word, it's a model plan.
That's, Teresa Sprague is a remarkable professional.
Yeah, it was very good, very good hearing. So I would like to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say before I finalize.
Dave Veach.
Well, there was a comment somewhere, it made somewhere in this, where someone commented that half of the house, the proposed house is within the 50-foot setback to the top of the bank. I live in a house that's half in that same, within 50 feet of the top of the bank. I actually, with respect to some of the concerns, I, at the time that we proposed, well, actually we, maybe I'm going too far in this, but we actually, when we first purchased that property, we had a house designed to replace the cottage that was there. And the neighbors challenged that in court. And one of the things that they, in their challenging in court was they wanted to make an argument that the work that we were proposing to do would, might destabilize their revetment. And it never got in court because we decided in the course of time, we decided we didn't want to build that house. We wanted to keep the cottage that we had. So dropped the lawsuit. We never got any further with that. But my understanding at that point was, in speaking to engineers and things, was no. And whatever would have been proposed to do the work that we were doing was not going to have any effect neither on, certainly not on the neighbors' revetment nor on our own. So it's, and at that time, we had a, there was a deck, a 12-by-20-foot deck that was on the water side of the cottage. And the proposal that we made was to extend the porch and create a dining, basically to enclose what had been the deck. And Conservation Commission looked at it, felt that it was a reasonable proposal. We didn't have any problems. So I live in a house that kind of has had some similarities to what they're proposing to do here. And so I'm not as troubled by these, some of the concerns with respect to the bank because, again, I mean, I'm going, I have to be assuming here, but, you know, the fact that that revetment doesn't extend further along indicates that it's a pretty stable situation and that they, again, they would have the right to extend a revetment if necessary. So I don't think that the consideration about the house being perhaps presenting a greater threat to the bank, I don't think really stands up in this case. I think it's a, it's a very nice design. I think it fit, the design fits. I don't think that, in this case, I don't see that replacing what has been a deck with a house really has, certainly not with the exposure that it has of the neighborhood is that fits, it fits in. I don't think it represents a threat to the topography in any way, shape or form. I, I just, you know, we're here to make a judgment about this stuff and CONSCOM has weighed in and they haven't had a problem with it. And so that, to me, helps me decide that I can definitely support this. This is certainly not substantially more detrimental and meets our other criteria.
Paul.
Yes, I think I agree. The design and the size of the house fits the location consistent with 69 and 36, and it seems to me, given its setback from Scaterie and the lack of visibility really to anyone other than, from the water, certainly works at its benefit. The stability of the bank was, I think, discussed a little bit by Dave Clark, because he pointed out the revetment and the fact that there was beach nourishment, dredge nourishment coming in and was placed in that area as further stabilization of the bank. So I understand the concern about it, but I think that all in all, it's not really going to be a problem, and there certainly is benefit from all the other mitigation work that's going to be done there. So I think it's, again, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, from my standpoint, my concern about a building replacing a deck that close to the top of coastal bank is, to me, a real concern, particularly for the owners of the property, but not to the neighborhood. So while I'm not wild about it, is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? No, it's not. But again, I'm not crazy about it. Ginny, did you have anything else you wanted to say, or you're all done?
No, I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Okay, fine. Paul, are you worried about conditions?
Well, this is a, I mean, the only people that are going to be affected here are family members, and the property is way off the road, at least Scaterie Road. I'm not sure that I see a need for conditions.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Frankly.
I agree. I don't see any, anybody feel okay differently? Okay?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
And Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, we need a vote on that. Ginny?
I vote yes.
Lee?
I vote yes.
Paul?
I vote yes.
Dave?
Dave Veach votes yes.
I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote for you, Mr. Riley. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Sarah, 23-057, please.
Application number 23-057, James and Judith Robinson, William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 20 Gammy's Lane, also shown in the Town of Chatham Assessor's Map, 15B Block 8, Lot B, Lot 4B. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 20-009, granted on March 12, 2020, which allowed for the demolition and reconstruction of the northeast and south wings of the dwelling, and an increase in building height within the easterly setback. The applicant now seeks to modify the special permit to allow for the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condensers, and be viewed as an extension of the existing nonconformity rather than a separate structure. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of Protective Bylaw. In the alternative, under application number 23-058, the applicant seeks dimensional variance from the abutter setback requirement under Appendix 2 of the Protective Bylaw for the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser, 22.2 feet from the easterly abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 41,382 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 8D 2C of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Jim and Judy Robinson, who I know are watching from Gammy's Lane this afternoon. They weren't quite sure when we would get to this hearing, and I think after the already lengthy hearing you have had, I will try to be very, very brief, uncharacteristically brief, in regard to two air conditioning compressors, which are admittedly 22.3 feet from a lot line, except there is a house between those compressors at the lot line. That's essentially what it boils down to. I actually went back and with the assistance, Mr. Van Bork is not only a skilled technician as well as a musician. He also pulled out the tape of the 2012 town meeting so that I could review it, when I saw when the exterior mechanical appliance system bylaw was adopted. And two of the three speakers on that issue were from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mary Ellen Sussman and a gentleman named Veach. And they spoke about sheds, because exterior mechanical appliance systems was a very, very small aspect of the change in the bylaw, but it's a change that unfortunately has caused considerable grief. Interestingly, while sheds are defined, it's not his fault, while sheds are defined in the bylaw, exterior mechanical appliance systems aren't. They are instead structures. The bylaw could have, I suppose, tried to say you can't have exterior mechanical appliance systems anywhere within the setback, but that's contrary to law. So we're asking for a special permit, and I will go through the criteria. As to adequacy of site, the site is certainly adequate for the two compressors that are existing, exist now, and it's no surprise to you what happened. The engineer and the builder didn't put them on the plan, and they were put there. And we went out for a site plan approval or an ASBIL plan, he said, oops, we have a problem. They are located, as I indicated, 22 feet from the lot line, where the house itself is one foot from the same lot line. And the house, again, obviously, is between the location of the compressor, compressors and the lot line. There's no change in gross floor area coverage, height, setbacks at all. As to compatibility aside, it remains compatible. Obviously, there's no change in the size of the house. A compressor is an integral part of a house. It's not a freestanding thing off the side by itself or a separate lot like a garage might be. A compressor is an accoutrement, adjunct to a house. But there's no change in the size of the house, nor is there a change, but there is a change or an alteration of a one- or two-family structure, for which both local bylaw and the state statute makes special provisions, that you can change single-family structures, one- and two-family structures, by something like an air conditioning compressor. If you're nonconforming, you come to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is why we're here. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there is none. We're 21 feet further from the lot line than is the existing house. As to suitability of the site, Conservation has commented, has no concerns, and will follow up with them. As to scale, siting, mass views, and visitors, no change in mass or siting, but locating the compressor in this location is preferable toward moving it further toward the street. Now, obviously, it's not much of a thoroughfare. There's only one neighbor beyond, but it would make absolutely no sense to move the compressor elsewhere. The relevant abutter, whose setback is to the east, has absolutely no concerns about this proposal. Health agent similarly has no concerns. So the issue is whether, from my perspective, and I know Mr. Briggs has a somewhat different point of view, but the issue from my perspective is whether the addition of this compressor 22 feet from the lot line with the existing houses, one foot from that same line, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconforming structure in a nonconforming lot. There is an important, obviously, subsidiary issue, whether that location 22 feet from the lot line creates a new nonconformity, which is not allowed under the Dedrick case. Dimensional categories and bulk categories in our bylaw are lot size, frontage, street setback, sideline setback, conservancy district setback, coverage, and height. In the Dedrick case, in addition to going out, the house went up. It went up too high. At that point, the limit in that area was 20 feet, and it went up to 25 or 26 or whatever it was. And the court, it had been previously conforming as to height, and the court said, no, you can't do that. You're creating a new category of nonconformity, height which previously had been compliant. So creating a new category of nonconformity, coverage, height, coastal conservancy district setback, requires variance. We're not creating a new nonconformity. The category is a single existing nonconformity. This house, the lot and the house, has a sideline deficiency in which the house is one foot from the lot line where 25 feet is required. The compressor, again, will be 22.2 feet from the lot line. You could make the argument, although I'm not, that there isn't really any intensification of the existing nonconformity, because Bjorkland listed a whole lot of things that wouldn't even require ZBA approval. But a compressor emits sound. Nobody but Jim and Judy will hear it, but it does emit sound, so we readily accept that it's an intensification, and thus clearly something that requires ZBA review. The Gale case that I've quoted to you before, and I know Jay is familiar with, I will quote from briefly. The permitting, the permit granting authority, Mr. Briggs, must first identify the particular respect or respects in which the existing structure does not conform to the present bylaw, it's too close to the lot line, and then determine whether the proposed alteration, additional change would intensify the existing nonconformities. If the answer to that question is in the negative, the applicant will be entitled to issuance of a building permit. It wasn't a negative, it was in the affirmative, and the court says, if that's the case, a finding of no substantial detriment under the second except clause of the statute is required. That finding stands alone as sufficient to proceed with the proposed project. If the permit granting authority, the Zoning Board of Appeals, deems that no substantial detriment will result from the extension or alteration, this conclusion is keeping, is in keeping with the special treatment explicitly afforded one- and two-family homes. It was a more recent case, the Belalta case up in Brookline, the court there, somebody said, oh, they need to get a variance. And the Zoning Board of Appeals said, we don't think so. And the Supreme Judicial Court said, we don't think so. You don't need a variance. It said, in keeping with the special protections afforded to one- and two-family residential structures, a variance is not required. Obtaining a finding of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood is all that is required. And the court quoted something that I think is absolutely wonderful. It's used the language many times in many cases. If a sensible construction is available, we shall not construe a statute to produce absurd results. It would be an absurd result if, when a house is one foot from the lot line, a variance is required to locate compressors 22 feet from that same lot line. There's no change between, no difference, rather, between alteration, modification, change, addition, extension. All those terms are used interchangeably in the statute, and in fact, in the Fitzsimmons case, Fitzsimmons versus Chatham, ZBA, from several years ago, the court used all of those terms, and they even spoke more broadly to the nonconforming nature of the structure. That's all that's at issue here. There are no cases of record that I could find, and believe me, I have looked, as to one- and two-family residences distinguishing air conditioning units from the homes they serve. But interestingly, in Belalta, and this is something with which I think I will be talking with the planning board as well as Jay, the court held, the SJC held, that a municipality's bylaw may not afford fewer protections to existing nonconforming structures or uses than does the governing statute. In the case in Brookline, Belalta, the plaintiff, and there's no plaintiff here, because nobody opposes this location, or it's the obvious location. In Belalta, the court said, well, our Brookline bylaw has got a floor area ratio, and there's nothing in the floor area ratio that says you can have deviations from it. There's nothing in our exterior mechanical appliance system bylaw that says you can have deviations from what it says. And the court said, we don't care. The state statute allows changes in nonconformity for things like floor area ratio or for the placement of compressors and generators only when the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that it is not substantially more detrimental. Thinking about the court's comment about absurd results, I was very pleased to see Bob Hessel here, and it reminded me of something that he said in the case on May 10, 2018. And I quote him, I wish he were still here. "I think the board would look like fools if we don't do this," quote, close quote. I'm not, I'm never suggesting that you would be foolish, but it is simple and logical and straightforward to grant a special permit for the location of these two compressors in this area. I could go on for a long time, because I've been thinking about this matter since last March, when I was before you, in regard to 101 Oyster Pond Furlong, and we had the exact same circumstances. While nothing you do is a precedent, because every piece of real estate is the same, I give you credit for one presidential aspect, and that is the use of common sense, and that's what I urge you to exercise today. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here today who would like to speak in favor?
There is no one to speak in favor.
Okay, the correspondence is limited. It's from Nicole Smith on July 11. And Nikki Smith is a conservation agent for the town. She writes, "The AC units were not specifically called out on our plan, but they appear to be on or below already approved structures, patios. I do not have a problem with approval of this plan." Is there anyone in the audience wishes to speak against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate who'd like to speak.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay. Questions? Let me ask Jay. Jay, how do you feel about special permit versus variance? Not generally.
I respect the decision of the board, however you want to go with it. The bylaw requires exterior mechanicals to meet a setback, and that's why I thought a variance might be required. Do I think the placement is bad or substantially more detrimental? Absolutely not. It's, it'd be crazy. I mean, I believe in common sense as well. But these were never shown on a plan when we approved work on site, so this came out of the blue on an ASBIL.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Questions? Randy?
So we're talking about two and a half feet. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Counsel? Thank you.
Paul? And here we're just generally discussing it, not specifically special permit or variance, just a general discussion.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay. Lee?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Dave?
I don't remember what I said at the time.
It was in regard to sheds.
In regard to sheds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't worry, he'll bring it up in another two years. Oh, don't you worry about it. Okay, so, well, let's discuss how you feel about special permit versus variance. Dave?
I, it seems to me, it, this just makes sense. I mean, the idea, the idea of an intervening building, you know, and I would, I would much rather just leave this at the special permit level and decide it on that basis. I don't see, because it's... Yeah.
Okay. Randy?
Special permit.
Paul?
A special permit.
Lee?
I agree, special permit. I think with the location of those, it's a unique, it's a unique situation.
Ginny?
Special permit.
And I agree. I think to go the variance route is crazy, so, okay.
Not that it wouldn't be the first time some people thought we were fools, but we'll go anyhow. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
We need a vote on that.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Veach votes yes.
I vote yes. Okay.
Clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It satisfies our criteria. I will vote affirmatively.
Lee?
I'd like to make a request that when architects are drawing up plans and engineers are drawing up ASBILs or whatever, you know, whatever it is, that they put the AC condensers and generators in the plans from the beginning.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
I agree with you 100%, but it's hard to twist all of their arms. I don't know. Ginny?
I vote in the affirmative.
We're not voting, but, you know, she's going to vote.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry. Oh, we're deliberating, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, boy, oh, boy. I mean, you know, the kinds of problems and issues that we've seen come up with respect to the exterior mechanical systems thing is, I, I'm kind of sorry to have seen it all in some respects, you know? I mean, this is certainly a perfect example of how, I'm glad that we have some level of discretion on these things, is all I can say, because there have been things where... where, you know, I mean, something comes as a variance, and trying to meet the criteria for variance, and he ends up saying to somebody, well, you gotta put the thing out in the middle of the lawn. I don't like being in that place, but, you know, if, if, in the course of all this, anything, if there anything that the staff or we can think of that might suggest to maybe, maybe by defining in the bylaw or something, something to help ease this situation, we've seen a lot of this stuff come to us, and, and for reasons, some of which is, and, and I appreciate what, what Lee is saying and asking for, it's just that's trying to get the, we're try, Chatham is trying to bend the construction industry to, with respect to these things, in a way that most other towns don't do. And so thus, the professionals, by and large, they are, the engineers especially, have become more aware of it here, but it's, a lot of times, you know, the, the sighting and, and the installation of these kinds of things take place well after the house is built, it isn't part of the, the plan necessarily, and it comes along, and the plumber, the HVAC people, and then their people, they put it in, and they don't know, and, and then it gets on, and it's, it's, it's not working real well necessarily, is all I'm saying, so.
I hear what you're saying, Dave, but it is Jay's job or Sarah's job to say, gee, Mr. so-and-so, are you gonna have a generator? Are you gonna have a, you know, AC or something like that? You know, they are presented with plans, and they're asked to rule on that. So, I hear what you know, but I don't know what the answer is. Anyway, Randy?
So, if this were going closer to the sideline, I probably would have said variance. And maybe I would have said, it's de minimis, which its own jurisdiction, don't, it's its own jurisprudence, there are no criteria for de minimis, it's kind of like the Supreme Court says about porn, you know it when you see it. And I would have probably thought this was de minimis.
Well, I was fortunate that the gentleman who was the, Mr. Lishfield's client happened to be there, and so we talked about, you know, where else did you consider putting it? And just none of it made sense, absolutely didn't. And also I asked him, are you gonna put in a generator? Well, no, because we're only here in the summer, and I'm not too worried about it. And I said, well, okay, you know. And he said, even if we did, we'd put it up the hill in that building there, so. You know, they, I think they really thought about where else to put it, but it didn't make sense. And so there, and if you noticed, there wasn't exactly a lot of grass in front of it, so I'm sure they're gonna put a couple of things there and put some grass, we won't even notice it. Okay, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
David seconds.
All right, we need a vote on that. Jenny?
Can now vote in the affirmative? Yes.
That's okay.
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
David votes yes.
I vote yes, that's your unanimous decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I ask the board's indulgence to two things? One, to allow us to withdraw the request for a variance. And second, to simply point out that with the increasing frequency of heat pumps, you're gonna be seeing this very often, and I think the bylaw may need to be tweaked, because more and more people are, for various reasons, moving toward heat pumps, which are exterior mechanical appliance systems.
And very expensive, too, I think. Paul, would you have a motion on the variance, please?
Yes, I'll move to. I'll move to approve the request to withdraw the request for a variance.
Yeah, David seconds.
Need a vote?
I approve.
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
David votes yes.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Lishfield. So, on to 23-052, please, Sarah.
I have a question before you get there.
Sure.
Since Jay is here, you guys just dealt with this. I always felt, and Jay's ruling is to the contrary, that if you had a building that didn't meet the setback, and you wanted to put your air conditioner or your generator between the building and the property line, that because you already had a nonconformity there, putting the AC or the generator was also a special permit, as modifying the house would be. So, based on the discussion you just had, so somebody sitting in the back of the room, it sounds like, from now on, if the house is nonconforming, and you want to put a mechanical device next to the house, that's a special permit and not a variance.
Well, we can't.
Since we're all here.
On the future. We don't, yeah, that's, that could be what you got out of it, but that doesn't mean that's what would happen. So, anyway, on with 23-052.
Application number 23-052, Riders Cove Dreams LLC, Care William O'Farley Esquire, appeal box 707, Chatham, Mass 02633. Owner of property located at 676 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 12J Block 12 Lot 5. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a nonconforming dwelling, a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling, swimming pool, two garages, and the removal of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser, and the construction of a new dwelling, swimming pool, garage with habitable space above, and the installation of exterior mechanical system appliance, pool equipment. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located 21.2 feet from the Easterly Butter and 25 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The existing mechanical unit is nonconforming, and it is located 19.7 feet from the Easterly Butter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and it will be located 20.7 feet from the Easterly Butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and 25 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed exterior mechanical unit will be nonconforming, and it will be located 21.9 feet from the Easterly Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,580 square feet, 9.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,686 square feet, 9.9%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 39,600 square feet, or 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January 22, 2023.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Chris Dietrich, who's here in the back of the room. We have Eric Tully, the architect, is online, and the uber-capable engineer, Thad Elders, is present here in the audience. So, this is a situation where Mr. Dietrich had purchased this property, you've seen this property before, we came in with a design a couple of years ago, which was approved, and then, for reasons of a growing family, and I think wanted to change the house a little bit, they came back in, and using the identical footprint of the existing main house, are proposing a new house. All right, now there are three structures. There's the house, there's a garage, and there's a garage with living quarters. In the new design, the garage is attached to the house, so we only have two structures in this iteration. We have the house, between the house and the carriage house are a garage with quarters, we have a swimming pool, and then we have the garage with quarters. So, if you've been to the property, you know, you drive in, and so this property's on the right-hand side of the driveway. We have the site plan, please, Sarah. All right, so, so, so that's the existing, if you bring it back down again, there you go. So, this is the existing site plan. So, you've got, you've got the house. Now you're confusing me. Okay, so this is the proposed site plan. So, you've got the house, there's an existing patio that's gonna be rebuilt, there's an existing deck that's gonna be, continue to be used. On the left-hand side of the house, they've added the garage. The septic system's going where the old garage was, then you have the pool, the pool is smaller than the existing pool, then you have the garage with quarters. And so the buildings are nonconforming, existing buildings are nonconforming on the east side of the property. And I always get confused in this area about compass directions, but, so, north is up, and east is the right-hand side. So, the proposed building is on the same footprint, so a little nonconforming as to the sideline. There's an existing exterior mechanical device on the east side of the house that's nonconforming. We've moved that, so it's back by the garage with quarters, right there. As I said, the pool is a little bit smaller, and, and the garage with quarters is about the same size, although it's a little further away from the property line than the existing system. So, I'd like to have Eric explain the design aspects of the property, and how they came to the, the design, working with Chris, and what his family's needs are. Go ahead, Eric.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eric Tully from ERT Architects in South Yarmouth, representing Riders Cove Dreams LLC. Just to expand a little bit on what Mr. Riley has already brought up, and by way of background, we were before you a couple of years ago with a house of a very similar design, but that proposal included pulling the house to the south and locating a pool to the north between the new house location and the, in the conservancy area, which ultimately the owner found that would have a negative impact on his views. So, we decided to make use of the existing footprint, and we added the garage, as Mr. Riley referred to earlier, out of the conservancy district, so as to make it more agreeable to conservation. So, that's a little bit of a history of why the design has changed, and the location of the house is now back to where the existing house is located. Other than that, if there are any specific questions regarding the design, I'd be happy to entertain those. Thank you.
Eric, just if you can describe the faux chimney that rises from the center of the building. There are some people who might think it's a cupola, and not everybody likes cupolas, so.
There are two false chimneys for aesthetic reasons, and the cupola was granted in the last approval a couple of years ago, so we thought we would try our luck again, knowing that this board has some reservations about cupolas exceeding the allowable height limit. But like I mentioned, it was approved in the previous iteration, so we thought we would ask for it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Eric at this time?
Later.
I guess I'll run through the criteria. So, the applicant believes the proposed project is adequate for the size of the site, because the home is being built on the same footprint as the existing home, albeit with the addition of a garage. And the proposed, the proposed height of the building is one and a half feet below the maximum elevation from the grade plane. It's nonconforming to the Easterly sideline at 20.7 feet. The proposed carriage house, which is further south, is 29, 21.9 feet from the sideline, where the previous carriage house was only 18.8 feet. Building coverage is 60 square feet, larger than the existing structure. And so the building coverage is only 60 square feet over the existing building coverage of the main house. Compatibility of size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties. Once again, I have to fire that secretary, because she didn't attach the information I had about houses along Riders Cove. But if you've been in Riders Cove, there are, there are large houses, there are larger houses, and then there are some modest houses. And so, this project, where we're keeping the house on the, on the same footprint as the existing house, just adding a second floor to it, we think it's compatible with the size of neighboring properties. If you've been to the site, you know the house to the east, the immediate butter, is a one-story house. The house to the left, the north, is a one and a half story, it's kind of a long rambling house. And so, across the water, there are some very large homes. And so, 147, 123, and 111 are all quite substantial. And so, in terms of how do we fit in the neighborhood, we think the neighborhood is kind of Riders Cove, since the house, since the house we're proposing is not visible from the street. So, we think that although the addition of the second floor adds quite a bit of living space for Mr. Dietrich's family, it's really adequate, and that's, that's the goal. A proposed increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure or use. Here, the principal increase, like on our previous application, is the increase in the living area. The, all the buildings are a little bit further away from the sideline than the existing structures. The house is not, but the other buildings are. And so, you know, it's really just increase in the living area as an intensification of the pre-existing use. Then suitability to the site for the proposed construction, keeping in mind the impact on wetlands and water bodies. So, again, here we have a situation where, scroll down just a touch, there you go. So, this has been to the Conservation Commission twice, both times it was approved, and we have a planting plan between the house and the water. There is an existing dock, that's gonna remain, so we think that the protective measures they put between the house and the top of the bank will prevent siltation or stormwater runoff going into the marsh. So, we believe that, you know, the site is suitable for the proposed construction. In terms of, you know, size, scale, and mass, and the impact, neighborhood views and vistas, the, this house, because of where it's located, doesn't have any impact on people's views and vistas over it. Heather Nickerson has a substantial house, if you want to scroll up just a sec, Sarah. There's a substantial house, we'll put your, there you go, right there, but it's, it's up at road height, and the, to the extent it has views down the sideline of the property, they're gonna remain. They also have views across the pool and the garage out towards the east part of Riders Cove. So, we're not impacting views and vistas. The, in terms of streetscape, well, we don't have a streetscape, but we do have Riders Cove, and I think that Eric's design is, has a single design, very much in keeping with traditional Chatham designs. So, I believe that the, these changes to this house with this design are not substantial. So I believe that the, these changes to this house with this design are not substantially more detrimental than, than the existing structure. It is a two-story structure as opposed to one-story, but other than that, I think it's a very handsome design. It's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood. We're having a new septic system installed. We don't believe there's any impact on traffic flow and safety or noise in litter. Utilities are adequate, and the 11 and 12 are not applicable. Thad, do you want to help? What do you got?
All right, Thad Aldridge, just to address the bank question again, there is a sheet piling located between the beach and the bank. That'll further protect that, that coastal resource. With the last plan, we were not really mitigating. In this plan, there is a substantial amount of vegetation that will be installed, planted.
Thanks, Thad.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one to speak in favor.
Okay, the correspondence. First, we have a memo from booth Georgia, a health agent for the town. She writes on 621, "I've reviewed the plan. A new septic system is proposed. A septic permit was issued for the previous version. Revised plans must be reviewed by the Health Department prior to construction and include floor plans existing and proposed." Then we have a note from the Conservation Commission on June 5th. "The Conservation Commission held a public hearing on April 15th and May 3rd. The project as proposed has been scheduled for an order of conditions on June 28th, when it will be conditioned to meet the performance standards of the town." Now we have a note, this is from Nancy Tansey, D-A-N-S-E-Y, 658 Orleans Road. "I wish to respond. 676 is a direct abutter to the proposed project pending approval." This is her address in 658. "The owner has been an upstanding neighbor since his purchase a few years back. The proposed project, the demolition of all the buildings, and improvements on the property, building of a large new home and extensive landscape appears extremely large in scale and will undoubtedly go on for more than a year, causing some level of disruption for the area for an extended time. As a lifelong resident of my property over 80 years, I request that demolition, exterior construction, exterior landscape, and all associated work be halted for our short outside season from June 15th to September 15th, so that all in the neighborhood can enjoy our short summer season, minimizing the noise on the exterior of all the property. Interior work would be allowed in normal working hours allowed by the town, which I believe is seven to seven. Any deliveries of supplies, work by tradesmen, et cetera, would be restricted to these hours as well, except for rare emergency. I wish the owner the best in renovation and know he will respect his neighbors during what might be a multi-year project." And then we have a note, this is from Mrs. Eileen Auer, 683 Orleans. "Since this property at 676 was last presented, the circumstances on this road have changed. The house directly across the street, the minor home at 671, which is beside me, is not restricted to no summer work and Monday to Friday work otherwise. 676, the only rented property in this well-established year-round residential neighborhood, should have the same restrictions to be consistent in our neighborhood. We can't have trucks on one side and not the other on busy Route 28. The topography on both sides is downhill and in the back of the property, so they are consistent of work to be done." And that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak either against this or has a specific question? If so, you indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay, questions from the board. Dave? You have any questions?
Not at this point, Dave.
Randy?
So, so Mr. Riley, you said the reason why they wanted to expand is about a growing family, and I know that's not part of our criteria, but it's being rented now by people that have no idea about the renovations. And as the, as the neighbor just pointed out in the letter, it's a rental. So, what's with the growing family?
That happens. I mean, how, what kind of detail do you want?
No, just saying, just pointing it out.
I'm going to get in trouble with my mic.
Well, I only mention it because Mr. Dietrich mentioned it to me, as I was sitting back there, so...
Thank you.
Paul?
Did you say, or did Eric say that the, I guess what I would call a tower on the top of the building was on the design that was approved several years ago?
That was what, that's what Eric said, yes.
All right, well, that's interesting. And the increase in gross floor square footage is primarily the question of an additional second floor? Is that, that's what's driving it?
That plus, plus you add in the basement.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's a second, you know, in terms of, if you just look at the first and second floor, you know, it's the second floor that's adding it, because the current building is basically just one floor.
Well, your figures are basically going from 6,212 gross square footage total to 9,085 gross square footage.
Those are, yeah, those are Eric's numbers, right.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Lee?
Does the current house have a basement, a walkout basement? Now?
I believe so. Yes, the answer is yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Let me show Paul the existing plan.
This is the plan you approved.
No talking, please, Mr. Riley.
I'd appreciate if you'd show that to Chairman Nixon as well.
Lee, did you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
Jenny?
I have a couple. The, the site plan CH1, that says garage, but that is the carriage house? Looks to me like that's the carriage house. Because the garage is now part of the house.
Well, which...
CH1 would be the architectural plan?
Yes, yes.
Well, the existing, the existing property, the way it exists today, it has a garage with living quarters and a garage. So we're doing away, we're taking the garage, attaching it to the house.
Yeah.
And reducing the size of the garage with living quarters a little bit, moving a little further away from the property line.
No, I, thank you, I, I do understand that. I wanted to just make sure I was looking at the proposed carriage house with CH1, which it looks like that is?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. No kitchen, I don't see a kitchen identified, but I just want to make sure that, for the record, there's no plans for a kitchen, because it can't be a guest house.
No, this property is not rated, it's not large enough for a guest house.
Okay, perfect.
But there is living space above the garage that exists now and...
I didn't see it in the, in the drawing there to the far left. I just wanted to make sure that I asked that question. Mr. Riley, your criteria number three, extent of proposed increase, you, you don't have it written here, but you use the word intensification when you were describing.
Yeah, that's, that's the language that first appeared in a case called the Bransford case.
Yep.
That was a case in, or in Martha's Vineyard, where there was a, a non-conforming lot that had a house on it. And the building inspector issued a permit for a new house that was somewhat larger than the existing house, and just issued a building permit for it. And a neighbor appealed the issuance of the permit to court, saying, "Should have gone to the, pardon me, the zoning board to get permission to build a larger house." And the, the, so the land court judge ruled that the, they should have gone to the zoning board because the increase in the living area on a non-conforming lot resulted in an intensification of the non-conforming residential use. And so, as a little side note, that case went to the Supreme Judicial Court, where one, one of the justices recused herself, so there are only six justices sitting, and it was a split vote, three to three, which means no decision, it means the lower court upheld. Then, a couple of years later, the matter came back again, that's the Borkland case we refer to, that's a case in Norwell. And this time, none of the justices recused themselves, and the chief justice, who was, had written the opinion, in the Bransford case, supporting the lower court judge, laid out all the conditions for building a larger home on a non-conforming lot, an intensification in there. In fact, there were some safe harbors, you know, if you want to add a dormer, you don't have to get a special permit to add a dormer. And if you want to add a garage, you can add a garage. So it's, the case was very helpful to professionals dealing with building new, larger homes on non-conforming lots, but that's where the intensification word comes from.
So the conclusion of the Borkland case was what? That there was intensification?
That there is intensification, and they needed to go to the zoning board to get a special permit.
Okay, so, I think we're, Paul, well, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Riley, for sharing with us the gross floor calculations. If I take the basement out of the main house, the existing house, and the proposed house, if I take that off, because you have said before, don't include the basement, it's 162% increase, the house, the proposed house versus the existing house. Is that, did intensification have some kind of percentage to it? That seems pretty high.
Well, the, part of the problem with numbers is that it's difficult to translate them into the concepts contained in our criteria. I, and so, you know, I mean, it's 162% of what's there today, I guess, but what's there today is quite modest. And the real question, I think, is, to your eye, which is really what we're talking about, visual impact of the proposal. Is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I mean, it's not substantially more detrimental because the gross floor area is more. The question is, is it substantially more detrimental because of the impact it has on views and vistas or on streetscapes? I think that's really the way to measure the criteria, rather than looking at numbers. So, because I'm a, I'm a history major and not a math major, so I always have trouble with numbers, but I really, I really, we've been doing this for a while, and I think it's really, what I tell my clients when they come in with a project, I say, "It's about the visual impact your proposal is going to have on the neighborhood."
I completely agree with you, and I was going to say, I recognize that a lot of that increase is going up, because it is a one-story today. But I did want to just ask, since you brought up intensification, because I'm going, there's some similarities to the previous application we just talked about, 58. This house is not as close to the coastal bank, but it's 25 feet. And so I was, again, kind of thinking about the weight of the house and any kind of, I mean, 50 feet is the law, you know, the new law. It's non-conforming, I understand that. The original proposal was nice, because it pulled it back away from the 50 feet, and it's the applicant's prerogative to move it back. I'm just trying to reconcile some of these, you know, these impacts to the change.
Well, one of the things which I neglected to mention, thankfully Thad was here to remind me, is this property is fronted by a bulkhead. So, what was happening in this area of Ryder's Cove? There was a couple of properties to the west. The Scarletelli residents were suffering erosion. Northeast winds would blow in, and it's, you know, you don't even think about it, but if you stand there, you can look from this property all the way out to North Beach, right to the northeast. So when we have a northeast gale, winter gales, you know, the wave action is enough, even though it's a confined area, to eat away at the bank. And so, I was representing the Scarletellis, had two properties over, and we were proposing rock revetment. And the, much to my astonishment, the then-agent of the Conservation Commission, Christian Andres, said, "Really, I think you ought to propose a bulkhead here." Well, we prefer bulkheads because they're less expensive than rock revetments. Generally, vertical faces are disfavored in water environments. But in this situation, where the waves weren't directly attacking, but were really coming in from the side, a bulkhead really made a lot of sense. So then the neighbor next door, Mr. Dart, he got a bulkhead, and then the owner of this property at that time, Fred Burris Jr., he got a bulkhead. And so, the bank itself is very stable. And with the new proposal, we're doing a lot of mitigation planting there as well. So I think, because of the bulkhead, I'm not concerned about the stability of the bank. And the mitigation planting is going to, you know, further protect the wetland value of that, of that area.
Okay, yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Thad, and for reminding me, Mr. Riley, about the bulkhead. No, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Well, I've got a couple of concerns. There's a beautiful tree, right in front of the house.
Right.
And it looked to me like that's where the garage is going to go.
I think that's correct.
And that beautiful tree is going to go.
Well, the, what did the Conservation Commission think about that tree?
That tree is outside of conservation jurisdiction.
That's too bad, because it's right in the center. Wonderful shade. Okay. Number two, when you were talking about the mass of the home and the percentage that Jenny came up with, that goes back to my comment about questions earlier, you know, I wish I had a 3D look at this thing, because my brain is saying, okay, this is being intensified quite a bit, and the, excuse me, the, it's not a cupola, it's the false chimney on the top of the house, to me is, is just pushing the envelope way, way over. I, I see no reason for it whatsoever. So that's a real concern, but my main concern is that tree. I mean, that's, you could argue that's a signature tree on that lot. So, okay, any other questions? No? Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing, move into deliberations. Give each second.
Okay, Jenny?
Um...
Oh, you just say yes?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Me too, yes.
Yes. Jenny?
Okay. I had some of the similar questions that I had with the previous application, as I mentioned, but I think the bulkhead is, and the extra mitigation from conservation has helped sway some of my concerns about the massing. It, it's not massing of the house and, and with respect to the neighborhood. I think it's, there are a lot of large homes there. And Dave, you mentioned in the previous application too, that it's a matter of, is it more detrimental to the, you know, the neighborhood? No, but maybe the person. It's a very similar situation... a very similar situation, I think, to our previous application. So my, my concerns are the same, but I, I've, I'm leaning towards, towards yes.
Dave Veach?
It's, it's definitely larger. I, I certainly, I mean, it's, 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 I think it's pushing the limits somewhat, but I think it, I don't see it as, again, you know, looking at scale setting mass with respect to the neighborhood, I, I don't see that it has a large impact on the neighborhood. You know, unless you were to consider, I mean, I, I think it may have an impact on the views from across Ryder's Cove, but then you're kind of getting to looking back and forth across, you know, from one side to the other. I'm not sure about how that looks. I, I think, I, in this case, I, I think that the cupola is...
It's a false?
It's gratuitous. I don't think that it actually enhances the design of the house. I think it calls attention in the wrong way, shape and form. And I, I, I don't, I, I don't normally have a strong feeling against cupolas, but in this case, I, I don't think it should be there. I hear, Dave, your concern, Dave, about the tree, I'm, I'm not, I hate, I hate to see trees go, but I'm not sure.
Okay, no cupola.
Thank you. And I, I, I'm not sure what to think about that. If it's outside, I mean, I hate to see trees go, but property rights are property rights, you know. So, I'm, I'm, all in all, I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's, it's definitely larger than what's there, no question about it. But it's a kind of a unique location that I think can support this somewhat larger house, so.
Randy?
Before you start, Randy, pardon me for interrupting. Thad Eldridge has suggested, and Chris has agreed, that we will plant a substantial tree a little further south to, as a shade tree.
Can I start now, Mr. Riley? So, I liked the first plan. I think it was wise to retreat. And I think that when you can be 50 feet from a coastal bank, you should be. Because it's not really just about the stability of the bank, it's about the fact that it's ideal to have a 50-foot buffer of, of, you know, vegetation. And it's not just about the stability of the bank, because that vegetation also absorbs nitrogen, which is a huge problem, and it also provides wildlife, you know, benefits, and also benefits the fisheries with regard to the health of the, of the waterways. And I think that's the neighborhood as well. So, I don't like that it's going to be a huge house within 50 feet of the coastal bank when it doesn't need to be. The other factors that I think are important, so that would fall under protection of natural resources, which includes that tree, and also the preservation for future and, future inhabitants to enjoy national, the natural assets of the community, which include the waterways. Also, to ensure the appropriate use of land, and to keep the town desirable. Two-thirds of town meeting voted for a 50-foot buffer, and I think it's important. So I don't think the fact that it's not going to fall into the water tomorrow is the only factor. As to that, I think it's huge, hugely intensified. And also, it's not necessarily for residential use, which is another one of our criteria that troubles me and I'm out. So, I'm going to vote no.
Well, I think...
Paul?
Well, when I looked at the design, and I, obviously, we, I guess we approved this concept of, I, I don't see it as a cupola, I see it as sort of a tower. But I guess it's been eliminated. I don't know where that leaves the faux chimneys, the false chimneys, as to whether they would continue to be there. But it seemed to me that it was just superfluous to the whole concept. So I agree with Dave Veach's comments with respect to that. The other thing that did bother me is that we're going to a much larger gross square footage. And that's, that's a bit troubling. I don't have the same problem that Randy does with respect to the 50-foot buffer zone, because we're doing, we're building in the exact same footprint that exists now. So I don't think that I would attempt to move it, move all of the house out. I mean, it's the same kind of issue we faced just a few minutes ago with the Ryan family. So, I'm somewhat concerned about the overall size of the property, of the, of the building, and whether that's consistent with the neighborhood. But I'll listen to what the rest of the people have to say.
Lee?
I, I agree with Paul. I am somewhat concerned with the overall size of the building as well. And I don't care for the cupola, or whatever we want to call it. I don't think it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I mean, there's a lot of large homes. I am not voting today. I'll leave it at that.
Can I just correct one, one thing that Randy said? Chris, the current building is being rented. This building is going to be Chris's primary residence, just so you know. I want to correct that. Thank you.
So from my standpoint, by eliminating that thing on the top and planting another substantial tree, I like that idea very much. So, while it is going to be sizably bigger, I don't see it as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so that's fine with me. Okay. Paul, what did you think about the conditions? That we had two requests about time?
Yeah, I was a little, a little confused by one of the requests about construction being across the street, and that affecting the construction on this side of the street. It seems to me that it's possible to, to have construction at both locations at the, at the same time, given the fact that this property is set down in quite a ways, and presumably, we would have our normal conditions with respect to construction. So I think we can do that with our normal conditions.
So you're not concerned about making it June 15th through September 15?
I think if we use our, our normal conditions here, which I've got to just pull up. Pardon me?
Yeah, that, June 15th to September 15th, it's fine. It's a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks longer than the standard, but Mrs. Tansy's a nice lady.
Okay. All right, well, that would, because I, I don't think she minded you doing interior work. You say, right? Yeah, okay.
All right. So what we've been talking about would be construction activity and vehicles would be contained on-site or to neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 15th and September 15th, there would be no exterior construction allowed, no work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Correct. Dave Veach, seconds.
Vote. Ginny?
I vote yes.
Paul?
I think based on the comments I've heard, I will vote yes.
Randy?
No.
Dave Veach?
And, and I'll vote yes. And I, I just also wanted to clarify that I spoke about the cupola, but I think the false chimneys look good, actually, up there, so.
And I vote yes. That's your successful four to one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Okay, let's move on to our next hearing, 20 Middle Road, 23-060. Sarah?
Application number 23-060, Vincent Family Realty Trust, care William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 20 Middle Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11K Block 29, Lot HC 55. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change in non-conforming exterior mechanical system appliance on a non-conforming lot via the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance generator. The existing exterior mechanical system AC condenser is non-conforming, and it is located 24.6 feet from the southeast Hurleya butter. Their proposed generator will be non-conforming, and then it will be located 22.4 feet from the southeast Hurleya butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 22,000 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield, I will be very brief, because you've had an even longer afternoon than when I first started. The short version is that the Vincents have an air conditioning compressor, that they already have a non-conforming exterior mechanical appliance unit, and they have cited next to it a generator. This wasn't a problem created by an engineer or a builder. This is famous footnote seven. Mr. Vincent does his homework, and he looked at our bylaw. Before he cited the generator, he knew that exterior mechanic appliance systems had to meet the same setback as structures. He was thorough, and he read the footnotes, including footnote seven, which applies only to our 60 and our 40 zones, such as here. And what that says is that for lots in existence prior to May 1987, and a butter setback of 20 feet shall be required. No one told Mr. Vincent that only applies to single-family primary residences, and in fact, if you read it, it doesn't. I said to Mr. Vincent, your native tongue is English, is it not? And he said, yes, is yours. I said, yes. We both agreed that we can speak English and read it. The bylaw didn't help him. He didn't do the wrong thing. He read the bylaw, and he cited it next to the compressor. His lot was created in 1948. The house built before 1965. He told the generator person to put it where it is, which is 22.4 feet from the lot line. However, we need a special permit, because that's not the interpretation of the bylaw. So going to the criteria briefly, as to adequacy of site, certainly the site is adequate for the generator, located adjacent to the AC unit within the lot line setback, but still 22.4 feet from it. There's no impact on compatibility of size, no change in coverage mass or, or otherwise. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, it is slightly further away from the house, but only to meet code and safety requirements as applied to generators, resulting in a minimal change in nonconformity. There's no environmental issues as to the scale sighting, there's no scale to the generator, but it's cited nearly 80 feet back from the street, 55 feet from the nearest the butters, without impact on views and visitors. So the question, as you know, is whether the installation of one additional exterior mechanical, exterior mechanical appliance system, a generator, would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconformities, which obviously include the existing AC compressor in the same location. So this differs from some prior cases with appliances. He did his homework, adjusted our bylaw, doesn't really mean what it says. So we are asking for a special permit, which I think you can, in light of the criteria, on this site and these facts, you can certainly find that the installation is not subs, more, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure.
All right, thank you. I'll ask, is there any, anyone in the audience or on Microsoft who would like to speak in favor of this application?
There is no one left in the audience.
All right, let me read the correspondence. We have one matter, which is from Kate Infantino. Hello, this letter, email is written to show our support for application number 23-060, Vincent Family Realty Trust, for a special permit for a non-conforming generator installation at 20 Middle Road. We are butters residing at 129 Seapine Road. Kindly note our approval for this special permit. I'll ask if there is anyone in Microsoft or in the audience who would like to speak against this or has a specific question.
There is no one to speak in opposition.
Okay. Let me ask the board members in general, does anybody have a question that they wish to ask in connection with this? Okay. Do I hear a motion to terminate the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing, move into deliberations.
I approve.
No second.
The second, all right. And we'll do a roll call vote.
I approve.
Approve.
Veach approves.
And I approve. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve or discuss any further the issue?
I would move approval of the, to grant the special permit as requested.
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
I say yes to this application.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Nicho, yes?
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Do I hear a motion with respect to adjournment?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Second. We'll do a roll call vote.
I approve.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Nicho, yes?
And Chair votes yes. We are adjourned, and the time is? Thank you.
Good night, Chatham.